That is a few folks, so we'll.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I'm I'm used to do disrupting my meetings. According to Sean, she's the reason why finance gets delayed all the time.
That's true.
So, good to see you, Erin. Yes, um, I'm sure algorithm is in route, but we will move forward. So, um. I don't think we have anybody for public comment. Nope, alright. Uh, approval of the minutes from the seventeen. So, basically presentations for the three plus one and everything. Alright. So then the content agenda, we've got the treasurer's report. Um, food service and then a rather large transfer. Uh, but it's really from the the tax warrant, money's being moved. So. Anything to speak to noticeable? Alright, like we're ahead with this. So, uh, discussion. Uh, five point one, the reduction of uh, tax reduction requests, get my language in order.
Oh, so we have David West here.
Hello, David.
So, David, uh, approached Mary Grover and I many, many months ago, and David, we so thank you for your patience. It's a, I don't think we ever honor how much time it takes to get back to work. In a traditional right September start, uh, the holiday, so we really appreciate you sort of. Um, waiting to be able to join us at a finance committee and talk about some of the. Um, thinking um, from the town of Dandy. Um, that perhaps as a taxable entity, the school district, uh, a proposal that we might want to consider. So, David, if you wanna just sort of spread us before that.
Well, I really appreciate the chance to be here. I'm the town planner for the town of Dandy, so I'm here representing. Uh, the town board and also the DNB Conservation Advisory Council. Um, there's two things that I wanted to talk to you about, and one. Uh, I'll preview both of them. The first is that the town is working on a tax reduction for conservation easement parcels. Um, and the second is that the school district has a school in DNB that the town recently rezoned the area around. I'd love to start having conversations with the school district about it, because I think there's some opportunities there. Um, for collaboration. So, the first, um, the the tax reduction, the town of DNB. Is working to uh, do two things. One, to make it really easy to build in our transit served historic hamlets. And two, to reduce sprawl in the rest of the town. We want it to be affordable and accessible to build in the right places. But we also want to do what we can to fight climate change, uh, to preserve the natural beauty. Of the area and to preserve the ecological function of the area by reducing development in the parts of town that it doesn't make sense. Um, so with those two together. Uh, the town had a really broad consensus across. Uh, political parties at the political spectrum, that they want to incentivize the protection of. Unique, large natural parcels, and one way to do that is to reduce the tax burden on those parcels. Uh, essentially, right now, some people who, you know, have legacy lands. Uh, their cash poor, land rich, they feel like they have to constantly sell out pieces of their land. Uh, to pay the taxes to, you know, retire, whatever it is. Um, it's not really great for farming, it's not really great for logging, it doesn't create a lot of cash flow. So, there's people who don't want to sell land, but they are, and they're creating these uh, kind of suburban sprawl subdivisions. To pay taxes. Uh, across the political spectrum in DNB, people have said, we want to slow that down, reduce that as much as possible and protect the most important places. Uh, and one way to do that is to reduce the taxes. The town got, um, a state law passed. That adds us to a list of around five other towns in all of New York State that can do this, that can offer a tax reduction. For conservation easements. No one else in Topkans County can do it. No one else nearby can. Most of the places they can are kind of in the Hudson Valley, uh, Long Island areas. So, it's something that we wanted to reach out to both the school district and the county about testing out. The way the state law works, there are some constraints on us, but there's also some flexibility. And we would like to ask the school district to appoint someone to work on our committee for setting up how this works. You know, we thought we could set it up the way DNB thinks is perfect, and then come to the school district and say, you want in or not? Um, and I don't think that that's a very collaborative or functional way to work, so I thought, why don't we put the brakes on our local process and come to the school district? You know, the taxes on properties for the school district are more than the town taxes, so we can kind of do our own thing, but. It's not that functional without working with the districts anyway, um, and the county, so we're trying to reach out. Um, and start that conversation. This would be a revenue neutral thing. It basically transfers, um. The tax burden from some properties to other properties. Uh, we've looked at places that have done it, you know, the amount of increase on a typical house is minuscule, almost. Uh, measurable, um, with what the amount of conservation that we expect. So, it doesn't have a substantial fiscal impact, but it is something that takes the political will to kind of get this participation. So, we're at the beginning of that conversation. We'd like to have more of that conversation with you. Uh, and I'm kind of here to. Preview that and to hear questions, hear what concerns might be, uh, and just to gauge your interest in. Uh, working on this with us together. Um, the other piece, I'll just say briefly, I say you gotta.
Go ahead.
Um, you have a school property in the town of Dandy. A lot of people are sad that it's not, uh, an active school, but it's a lot of land, and it's in what we call our central DNB hamlet. It was recently rezoned to allow a lot more housing. Um, cluster housing. Uh, the kind of walkable neighborhoods that we see around the school would now be allowed there. With the provision that we don't have the infrastructure to support like that density, but you could, you could put housing there. There are other school districts that have done things like working with the four one housing developers that have housing that prioritizes staff and faculty. There's opportunities for things like that. I know the school district has also talked about, you know, the solar or something else out there. Uh, but because we've, you know, recently. Upzoned it and said that this is an area where we want. Neighborhood scale development, um, I thought it would make sense to reach out to the district and, you know, just say, I'm here, come talk to me. I could talk about opportunities, what's allowed. And I wanna kind of make the opening for that, so. I wanna get back to the the tax question. I saw you had a question.
Yeah, cuz it sounds like you alluded to it, I just would like clarity, so. From the town, the town's uh. Responsibility, it sounds like you would. Change the taxing amount on the the areas you're talking about, but the shift the burden to other properties. Make it tax neutral for you and. That is on you and and the taxpayers are agreed to that, or basically the town is changing this, um, making it applicable. So, for our process, we probably have to go into the full board. Do we have to go to the taxpayers, or it would be a board full vote, correct?
To make these, to make, to give this a reduction.
To give this reduction, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have, we'd have to bring in legal, right, to to advise us on what this would look like. Yeah, Dr.?
Yeah, that is my question. If I heard a tax burden shift.
Yeah.
So, we would be. Electing to into a process that would shift the tax burden to folks who are paying tax. Like, just clarify that, someone we get more taxes based on a board action.
So, essentially. Out in DNB, let's say that we got. Three hundred acres put under conservation easement, so. Based on the length of the conservation easement, the state allows us to reduce taxes or. Uh, an easement that are different lengths, and then you get different amounts of reduction, so say the taxes are reduced fifty percent because they did a really long easement. Uh, that changes the taxes that come from that parcel, but it doesn't change the levy, so essentially. The money that was lost on that, and I I will also, you know. The taxes on land are a small percentage compared to, it's really the buildings that make up most, yeah. Most of the value of a property, and so the land tax, as it, a s- small percentage of it goes away. It then gets redistributed basically among, whatever your levy is, gets redistributed among the other.
So, let me, I'm gonna say it very simply.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it goes about both each year, and we raise taxes or lower them.
Yep.
In this case, property owners will have their taxes increased based on a board action.
Essentially.
Here.
Yeah, you know, maybe.
Uh, it doesn't matter.
I realize.
We'd be raising taxes, um, you talk about this issue is a big one. I've, my family has had this issue, but I grew up on a rural community. Put a lot of land and we had to sell it all because of this issue, so I understand it.
Yeah.
But I do also, as someone who is a tax authority, surely raising taxes on someone.
Yeah, and that's why we did some work running the numbers, and it it would make more sense to talk with assessment as well about what the impact of that is, but. When the numbers that I ran, it was a num- an amount of increase to the average person that. You know, it was a tenths of a cent per thousand dollars, so a number that. You're not really even, you're not gonna see it or feel it in a significant way.
And is that because of the amount of land that is, that you're asking to have the easement for?
Right, so, the way it would work is that a property owner who owns land would apply. To put an easement on it, so they would come to the town, and if the school board was participating. I, we would have representation of the school board as well and say. And we have this land, we think it's really special, we wanna put this easement on it that says it can be developed for fifty years or or ninety years or forever. Um, and based on the amount of years, they would get a different reduction in the taxes. It's not automatic. If the town and the participating jurisdictions still have to say. Yeah, we think this is important, this is an important piece of land, but this is, you know, worth that, what we're giving up to get that.
So. Let me say that, but I mean, I love the idea about this. I love, you know, impacting climate change, all of it. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna push with this question for anyone watching and for myself, cuz I'm not, math is not my strong suit. When you say, I mean, so what, I mean, give an example of a property that someone would get an easement for. Give me dollar amounts of what the tax burden relief would be, and then say like a property owner who might. Get that burden as like a three hundred fifty dollar assessment of their home. I I want like actual numbers of what we would see, what, what, what would, what, what relief would they get and what burden would they get, like physical numbers with examples.
So, that may be something to get back to you on of, on exact numbers, but, um, let's say. Someone owns in DNB a hundred acres. That land, and they have a house on it. The house in the first acre is probably worth two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. Every acre after that is only worth twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. So. I can't do the math in my head to tell you what the taxes are gonna be on that fifteen, twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. But let's say they put, you know, eighty acres of that in an easement. Uh, that reduces the taxes by fifty percent. That's going to. Reduce what they pay on the land, not on the house. Uh, only on the land that's under the easement. Essentially, the assessment creates a separate parcel in their database and gives it another number when that happens. Uh, so their taxes would be reduced, and then essentially everyone else's pick up the difference. You know, we looked at what would be really optimistic of getting people into this program, what could we. You know, if we, our wildest dreams were successful, maybe we get the largest. Ten, fifteen parcels in the town into the program. Um, and we looked at even up to to twenty, got the largest twenty parcels, and I I don't think. That's not the way these things usually work. You don't actually get the largest ones, and you're not gonna get that any, it's slow. Uh, but if we did that, when we calculated out, uh, from the town's perspective, spreading that across the rest of the town. Um, the difference it made in. For us, an average house was, again, in the hundreds of cent. Per thousand.
A thousand, but I mean.
Increase.
Increase, right, but like, again, like that, what does that mean, like per month increase, like?
So, if you're looking at the. The regular tax rate, so you're probably looking at a couple hundred dollars a year increase, if that. Depending if you're looking at two hundred fifty to a three hundred thousand dollar home, from what I hear you say.
No, uh, you're talking about like a. Thirty cent or three dollar.
Per year.
Yeah.
So, with the school district entering to this agreement. We would still recoup the same amount of tax levy because it's just shifting the burden. Um, to someone else, so it doesn't really impact the district.
It doesn't impact the bottom line.
But it impacts us. I guess, but I'm struggling, but, um, you said you had support from both sides of this little, wow, I think that's important.
Yeah.
Uh, but are we voters, or these are just folks on the town board who make this decision for everyone? And my second question, I mean, whenever we do something, until the attack, we're gonna, you know. A number of things that we've always taken to our voters, who had significant conversations about, um, whether we would involve all voters. So, who's involved in the conversation? You have a grant, you apply for this, or did the voter say you wanna do this?
The voter said we wanna do this, so we were engaged in, uh. More than a year long zoning update process and convened what we call a planning group. That was kind of self organizing, anyone who showed up to two meetings, had a vote, uh, there were hundreds of people involved. Um, I have hundreds of hours of meetings that I put on YouTube of just some of those groups. But one of the self organizing groups that sprung out of that was a a tax committee. Um, you know, we had a group looking at our hamlet development, we had a group looking at conservation, we had a group looking at. Uh, how we can do a public outreach, things like that, um, the the tax group. Formed and it had this cross section of libertarians, republicans. Far left, uh, democrats, people who conservation is their biggest thing, people who land rights are their biggest thing.
But can you define self organizing? I'm struggling with that, uh, self organized vote, vote for a vote on a ballot, which one?
So, this isn't something that we can put on a ballot.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh. It was something that we had a broad town consensus on, and that then the town board. Voted on sending to New York State, getting the legislature to to make adjustments, and. Uh, so it came out of this kind of open, anyone in the town can participate year long process of what are the most important things to work on. Uh, there was a a core of people, uh, who said that this this tax issue of, you know. It it hits in multiple ways, because one side of the town really wants to preserve these places. And another side of the town is really sensitive to, um, the fact that people, you know, need. They have an investment in the land and they feel like they're good caretakers of it, but they also want to, need to, you know, get money out of it and. That this is a way to address both sides of that, that they don't really want to be subdividing, but they feel financially like they have to.
If I wanted to find out more, would you be able to send us this information, or?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and I I'm thinking that this is only, you know, the start, but. You know, I wanted to catalog kind of what the questions and concerns are, and also just see. Is this gonna be the thing where you just kick me out the door and say, we don't even wanna talk about this, or is this something that we can, you know, uh.
Chris.
Get some involved.
I've got, I'm not on your committee, but I have a quick question. Um, I thought initially you were going to be coming to us here to talk about. Wanting to place some of our land in conservations, but that doesn't sound like that's part of the equation at all.
I don't know of any land that school district owns other than the school.
Okay, and how many acres do we have? Do you know off the top of your head, Bill? I don't either. So, sorry, we've looked at it for the solar project, I'd have to, I'd have to look.
Why does thirteen acres stick in my head?
I, it was, it it's.
It's gotta be bigger than that, but.
Thirteen acres. Caroline's twenty acres.
Okay, I.
That don't feel like.
Okay, thank you.
Feel this. I don't know if I'd.
Okay, so, but we're not looking at that, we would be looking at it purely as stakeholder in the, um.
Yeah.
Is a taxing, is, we pay taxes on that to the town, or don't we, no?
Yeah, it's a system.
So. Okay. And it wouldn't be affecting the taxes we get, except in.
What do you think, somebody's backyard, so?
Yeah, it wouldn't be affecting the taxes we get, except in terms of who it's coming from.
Right.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies it quickly.
Chris, one thing that, um, I did talk to David about, I, and I. When we, when we spoke, and one of the things that Mary and I thought was good is, I think, you know, um. There's all different types of exemptions, right, that we as a school district, over the course of these years, even since I have started, like, people come and they'll. They'll talk about these things. We haven't done a really good job of sort of going through all the different types of exemptions that are out there and the groups that. Um, may or may not be interested in coming forward and asking for those exemptions. Um, I think that, you know. Obviously, conservation, agricultural, the veterans, like, those are a couple that I think of right now. Um, we could definitely have someone from BSNK, there's actually an attorney from our group that could educate us.
Yeah.
Because I'm, what I'm hearing is like, we actually need to learn a little bit without. Like, A, the process, B, what, right, like, what's the impact, and I think David can really help us with this piece. But there, I think we also need like Jay to talk about the other exemptions and the impact, and put this on like a grand scale, because as a taxing entity. Um, you just, you can never look at one slice without the whole picture, and so I'm just wondering if that's a logical next step for the board.
I think.
And to to keep it rolling and keep it moving, but also like from a learning, from a learner perspective.
I think this is like the very thinnest slice of the onion in this conversation right now, and, um. Uh, so you mentioned two things, what is upzoning?
So, the zoning is what limits density, and upzoning is basically when you allow more.
Oh.
The opposite would be downzoning when you, which we did to a lot of the town, where we said, you can build less.
I I, I actually, I just love the idea of exploring this, because people are hurting, and if we could alleviate tax burden by shifting. You know, starting with the onion, as Chris said, I think this is, I'm glad you're here.
And I think about this as a pilot, right, if it works great in DNB, as I have heard people say, well, why, why don't we do it? In the rest, is it fair for Dryden, or is it fair for Ithaca? Uh, I think of it as a test, if we try this out and it it's functional and it works well. Uh, then we, it can expand and other towns can join, or the county could could do a county wide. Uh, program, but, you know, we're, we're the first one in the area that's done the work to get the seat, uh, to allow it. Um, and so, I hope that we can. Test it out, and think of it like a pilot. Not the tax kind of pilot.
That, that's not the thing, it'll lose tax. Uh, then you mentioned Dandy School and, um, opportunities there.
Yeah, uh, so the the school is kind of smack dab in the middle of what we've zoned as the hamlet neighborhood. Um, which we had eliminated minimum lot sizes, we have no parking requirements. Um, you can do single family through fourplex by right with no site plan review, a very smooth process. And you can do higher density, um, with a process of site plan review with the town, so, uh. There's a lot that could happen on that parcel. Uh, some of the benefits, you already have a significant septic system in place, it probably needs some work, cuz it's been not fully utilized for a while, but. Uh, that's an asset that already exists, um, it's a significant, significant amount of land. Uh, for housing, I would say, you know, I know that there's been conversations about solar, it's not really a significant amount of land in terms of solar. Right, which I know because we have a much larger solar farm going in, just a little bit, um, down the the line from there. So, I I wanted to start that conversation about what it can be. Um, I don't, I've heard rumors about the condition of the building, I don't know what you're up against in terms of the building. If it's something that's, you know, being saved or reused or other things like that, but there's a lot of land on the site.
Yeah, so we definitely use it right now, so it's not zoned for children, right? Um, but we definitely have offices there, our campus construction, um, and all the capital project meetings occur out of that. Um, we leased office spaces, uh, we leased it currently. Um, we just ended the family meeting partnership lease, but the running to places lease is in. Still going, it is our archive, it is our storage area, it is, um. Our facilities, grounds and maintenance use that as sort of the spot, like where we get large deliveries, right, we put furniture together there. And it was considered when we were thinking about, um, our Bosworth Road facility, which is the transportation department. And our needs for e-buses, what space actually would be better if we wanted to incorporate solar bays and, you know. Um, our buses there, so it's, it's definitely not, um, ignored. Uh, it's not used by kids, but it's definitely not ignored. Um, the fields are used, I know by Ithaca College, and that's a, through the athletics department, there's a collaboration there. So, um, if we were to explore declaring a. Campus a surplus and wanting to sell or even parcel that. That has to go to the voters, and we would need to work with our attorneys again on that. Um, so, that's a little bit longer process, but definitely one, again, where I think education. Um, and then also working with our architect to determine like what if costs, right? What is the school district's vision for that? If it is giving it back to the community, and I mean that legally and, you know. Whatever that process would be, that can absolutely be part of the discussion as well, we should just learn what the steps would be for that.
I know we didn't answer a lot of your questions, but.
That's okay. Well, I'm glad to get started, and, you know, if the board wants to think about it, if you want, uh. Continue conversation, or if you want someone at staff or on the board to start working with, um, Dandy's, uh, committee. On crafting the direction that they're heading, you know, just let me know what, what makes the most sense for you.
What I would like, for me and Eric, please let me know. Um, one would reach out to BSNK, our legal team, to understand what that looks like and what options we have, you could share. You know, a little bit of history and any information, and also you mentioned there's, I think, it's a ten other.
Five or six.
Five or six other, you know, um, you could share that out.
Sure.
I'd love to read up on it and understand it, you know, cuz I'm sure it's, it's different every, every one of those, uh, locations. And then we we can follow up. Thank you, David, appreciate it so much. Alright. So, we'll move to the overview of health insurance and other benefits.
Yes.
Which is a robust presentation.
It's not, it's not. Slide, we're just right then, yes, yes.
Actually, when I read through it, um, I'm going to make sure I save this in an accessible place, because it is a great wealth of information, it really, really is.
Look, thank you, Erin, we got, right, we've talked about this before, Emily, I just wanna give credit. Emily does such a beautiful job of pulling these things together, so I'm gonna frame this video. Um, you asked us to talk about benefits, we're not gonna go through every slide, and it's gonna walk us through sort of like the top three key points, the three takeaways. So, in the spirit of finance committee, we want these documents to be out there, we want. Places for people, either we push it out, or they can go to it, or they can find it, and we can refer to and have there in the spirit of full transparency and education. Right, around all of the elements of our budget, so, um, so I'm gonna stop talking and let Emily just sort of draw your attention to a couple of the key. Pieces, and, you know, we know, we'll do this really briefly and precisely, but obviously there's questions, it's an interaction.
No, I think it's a great tool and a great reference to refer back to, you know, cuz we do get a lot of questions, and. You know, we're getting around the holiday time and up full of good cheer, but also. No, really, to dispel misinformation, because there's a lot of. Numbers get thrown out, or this gets thrown out there, but folks don't understand. The pieces to the puzzle and how things really work, and I think this is a great tool to utilize.
Yeah. Thanks, I just wanted to get this, that was, that was my hope.
Everyone liked the need being full of good. Everyone liked the need being full of good cheer. I am.
So, yeah, the one thing I do hear a lot from people is, you know, when this time of year, people are in the private sector getting all this, right? And everybody's like, oh, well, we're the first school district. We don't get all this. Well, of course, you don't, but you get. One heck of a nice benefit package when you work for a school district. When you compare it to what others have and have never worked in a school district. Um, so, yeah, it was my intent to put this together so we could have this. You can refer back to it. It's like a one-on-one. Um, but really the benefits, all the benefits that we have to pay. For our mandatory that we pay where people can put into and the district pays a tiny portion of administrative fee. Makes up twenty-five point five percent of our budget, thirty-eight million, the largest part being obviously the health insurance. So then we have, you can go forward, we have the type snow.
New to this.
So we have the mandatory benefits, payroll benefits. You have your 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 payroll taxes, your unemployment, your workers' comp and your retirement system. Now, the teachers is up at the top because it is mandatory for our teachers to belong to the teacher's retirement system. Where it is the employees' retirement system, it is an elective. You you can choose to be in it. You don't have to be in it. It's not mandatory. So then you have your voluntary benefits down at the bottom with the employment, the health insurance awards would be in the FSA's accounts.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the E R S, T R S, the amount we give every, the amount we. We put in the budget every year is determined by a formula, correct?
Correct. It's on the tiers, the number of P L in those tiers, that's right.
So we do not set that amount.
No. So if we go to the next slide. Um, so this is just a learning tool. I never knew what FICA was until I looked it up. I wrote insurance contributions. So that's about all we have on that slide. Um, makes up seven point six five percent. Um, part of it is Medicare. The one point four or five percent is Medicare goes into. The government, but, you know, we have to take that. The district pays seven point six five percent. The employee pays seven point six five percent. So. Um, again, a mandatory thing has not changed in many, many years. Um, and I also included how we determine the budget. So we basically take the projections of the salaries, we multiply it out. There is a cap on uh the FICA for, it there's a threshold of a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So once you make over that amount. The FICA comes to an end. You will only pay up to that amount of earnings on the FICA tax. So um, it is kind of a skewed, you know, you take the total salaries, you multiply it out, make sure you have enough in the budget, have a little bit of cushion, but. You know, it's pretty simple calculation on how we get there, what we put in the budget. Unemployment insurance, another mandatory insurance that we have to have. Um, we have decreased it um in many years. It's still a little over budgeted. However. You have to be careful with where your unemployment is going. If we recall back into the gap elimination time back and there. There was a lot of layoffs going on at that time, and that's when our unemployment peaked around two hundred thousand. So we don't know what we'll get handed and where we might have to, we hope. We don't have to cut back our positions, but you never know what the state is going to hand us and. And what we may have to do in the future. We don't have crystal balls. So while we could reduce it, you want to keep it at a level. Of where you can bridge those kind of um. Abs and flows, I guess, if you, if you will, um, because you don't want to have huge splits. You don't want to reduce things to where there's nothing in the budget. And then all of a sudden have something happen and all of a sudden you have this one budget line that needs to have a significant uh budget hike. So that's what we try to do when we're planning in the budget. Um, we have the workers' comp and again, another mandatory. Now, this particular one is budgeted what we are paying. We get these estimates from, we belong to a consortium, the T S T, and we get these estimates early enough where. What is budgeted in that line in twenty-two, twenty-three is what our liability is going to be for the workers' comp. And it's based on a three-year look back of your uh your claims usage and then it also involves payroll. And the different types of positions that are more prone to accidents and there are certain percentages. It's a calculation that is done by. Our third-party administrator that works with the uh compensation board, the T S T compensation board.
Two comments on that. Marta Costa Potter in our office manages uh the um workers' compensation. She's calling um all of the directors, principals, when someone's injured on the job, getting that proper paperwork. You get fined if you don't spend that time. So Marta really is trying to keep us on that proper timeline, get those things filed and interfacing. Um, with both the the folks that are dedicated to the co-op at St. Louis Bosse's and then um ICSD. Cindy's also going to spearhead at any good um. You know, budget development time. You always want to analyze every couple of years. This is the best method for us, right? Co-ops, there are lots of different types of co-ops. One is local. There's a statewide co-op. We're actually analyzing. On the workers' compensation co-op in next year or two, is this the right place that we should be? So we'll. Update you as we find those results. And then again, that's just an analysis for us, which we do with with all of our benefits all the time.
And we have the teacher's retirement. Again, the teachers, that's mandatory for them to belong to the teacher's retirement system. Um, it is a tiered system, both the teacher's retirement, New York State sets a rate, it's approved by the contractor, and it is a single rate that we get assessed based on our. Uh, pensionable earnings from the prior year. So um, and it comes out of our state aid. So I never write, we never write a check per se. It just, we pay, we have no choice. They, what, we know the assessment and um it is, it is low. Uh, but it is based on, again, historical, it's. The rate is set by looking at what is a five-year look back on where our um. Our, the investments and how the investments have done for the T R S and where it needs to be. So. It's it's this huge calculation. We do not do it. We just get handed the rate from the state and that's how that is applied.
We had some really fantastic, um. If you like this kind of thing, uh, economists giving us overviews when we go to the business officials meetings. About the funding and the stability of our um retirement systems in New York State. And it is just such tremendous news, Jill, really.
It is pretty incredible.
Really incredible. I mean, it is, it is so well managed um that that portfolio. Uh, for both E R S and T R S and um state ed has created opportunities for school districts to create reserves. To support those payments for E R S and T R S, which we created here in Ithaca for the T R S recently. We've had E R S for a long time. So there's a lot of safety nets there. I mean, I just, we are not a state like Michigan or others. This is really fantastically. Um, supported, so.
Yeah, and we can, and we can increase the reserve. Right now, we have only. I think it's around one point four million in a reserve right now. We just started building it. That could be ten percent. Um, it can max out. It can be two percent per year and it can hit a ten percent of the total, which would be around five point five million. We're not nearly there yet, and I don't suspect it will be funding that particular reserve, especially when we have capital reserve and e-bus, things like that. So it is slowing in growing, but it is there.
So E R S is similar, even though you can't see E R S. E R S is exactly the same thing. We have a reserve. We use, we. Budget some of that reserve every year to use towards budget. And we also try to replenish that reserve so we can have it in safekeeping. But again, it's not something that the employees have to um participate in, but the rates again are set by the state. Hand it down to us and we, it's mandatory for us to take them.
So the health insurance, I'll spend a little, little bit more time on this one, but not too much. Um, we do have a reserve for the health insurance that we started building. The reserve. Is recommended that we have um at least half of what our expenses are. And we could grow it to half of what our expenses are on an annual basis, which would be around twelve million. I'm not suggesting we get it to twelve million. Right now, we're at four and a half million. But the thing you have to remember is since we are self-funded and we run that, we don't have, you could potentially have a couple of high claims in any given year. Could have somebody get up a heart transplant and a brain surgery in one year and all of a sudden, boom, your claims are way up and you're going to need that reserve to fall back on. Um, so it's a, it's a savings to make sure that our uh programs stay solvent and, yeah, stay solvent. Become solvent and um. And and so we do want to watch that reserve. Um, this is a really good plan. We have uh. The district contributes seventy-eight to eighty percent um depending on what group you're in, what union you're in. Um, and it is a, it. You know, you've always heard about the districts being offered Cadillac plans, and this is definitely one of those types of plans that suits us. And and I've just given the information about how many active employees participate. Uh, the Blue Cross also has our pre-sixty-five retirees, only a hundred and thirty-nine of those folks. And then the number of belly buttons. And those are, we've heard that before, it's the people that are covered under our plans. So you could have family plans with five people, potentially. We use the belly button. I got that from Christina.
I do want to make one comment. Um, our contracts obligate the district to pay seventy-eight to eighty percent, right? So an employee share is either twelve percent um or uh. It's either twenty percent or twenty-two percent, right, right? Depending on which bargain unit you're in. When we did a lot of the shifting with the retirees, I will tell you that. Being self-funded, the district is paying more than seventy-eight to eighty percent. We can, we can show you those numbers. Um, we're really careful, though, when we talk about that because we are not going to go to the employees. And shift it back to the contractually obligated language. We're not going to reassess that premium. In the middle of a year, at the end of the year, saying, the district's paying ninety percent and you, you know, the share is lower because it's claims-based. We're not in a co-op anymore where we used to give a premium amount every month and it was set. And there was a built-in fund balance in that and it was, we knew we were paying probably more, right, than the year was. Uh, this is claim-based. So to do, to keep that seventy-eight to eighty, we might have to assess every month. And then do an adjustment to people's premiums. We're not interested in that, but at some point in time. We will bring forward to the finance committee, right, like what the dis, what the taxpayer share is, the employer share. And what the employee share, who also may be a taxpayer living here, right, what their share is. And try to determine do when or how do we want to write that? All health insurance costs are socialized again uh uh across the actives and the retire, early retirees. In the sense that the pre-sixty-five retirees, meaning that like there are premiums that are set, but we don't like increase that X P number. If their claims are really high in a given year, everybody shares that burden. It's socialized. The post-sixty-five retirees, when we made that switch, remember, we gave them that savings back and then we gave them their savings back again. When we switched to the A T N A. And so that caused them to become unsocialized from the group. So there's a smaller group socializing those costs. We didn't actually take the burden of everybody. And include that in the post-sixty-five retirees. Um, so I just wanted to really create that differentiation as we go into the post-sixty-five retiring. I hope that makes sense to everybody. And then we have the the post-sixty-five. Um, so just some information, we have three hundred and twenty-three retirees, four hundred and thirty-three belly buttons. Um, and the estimated cost is based on the rates, okay?
They're fully insured.
Yeah, and in in like the other slide. I have to use, I have to have something to base the cost that I'm giving you on. So I'm using the rates that we set at the district and the portion of the district share and the employee share. Um, because it can fluctuate because of the claims. If you have a year like COVID. Things were down. A lot of people weren't going to the doctor and then all of a sudden after COVID or, you know, almost after COVID, I suppose, will always be in that state. Claims went up because people were going to the doctors and and getting a lot of things done. So um. You know, our expenses are always going to be driven based by those claims, but we, to do this scenario, I was um reviewing it using our rates. And it's very clear for this post-sixty-five because of that. Um, we pay. Uh, let's see, what was the hundred percent? I get it down here. We pay a hundred percent of the cost for. Find it here. Thought I had it down here at the bottom. There are many, many retirees that due to when they retire. At the time, their contractual language said that they would pay zero.
Oh, yes, right at the top. Sorry, three hundred and twenty-three. We pay the full cost of their premiums. So, yes, they had um contracts in. Place when they retired that once they hit, uh, once they hit sixty-five, even before, then I think.
That's right, that's right.
So we pay zero percent. Now, there's only one group right now that still has that negotiate. It's the para group where they hit. Um, sixty-five and they pay nothing.
If they've worked so many years.
Right, they gotta, they gotta, they gotta meet the criteria for it. So I suspect that that zero percentage will unfortunately eventually. Reduce because the para group is not a large group, but back in the day, there were a lot of retirees that had those of. Have that in their contract. Um, so that amount will shift, but when they do hit post-sixty-five. Their premium percentage reduces to half of what they were paying to the pre-sixty-five. So instead of paying twenty-two percent, they're paying eleven percent. As opposed on the on the Medicare or on the A T N A plan. Is there a question on that, Joe?
Oh, there's a billion of them, but keep going. I just, I need to hear it over and over again.
We took our budget for any questions.
So, kidding, Joe, we'll answer anything you got.
Yeah, we'll, we'll. And and I can always talk with you at your.
Oh, no, no, I was being.
This is a spiral curriculum for me. I hear it over and over and over.
There we go.
Eventually, it gets it.
It'll, it'll get in there. So dental insurance we offer to our employees. We do not offer dental insurance to the retirees. So the estimated expense is for um the employee share of the. The dental insurance. Uh, retirees can keep it in, is a Cobra plan, which means they pay a hundred. Hundred percent of it. We have eight hundred and ninety-four employees and one thousand one hundred and ninety-three belly buttons. And I put the numbers down there because I think it's important to see how many of our employees are participating in these programs that are electives for them to participate in. So.
Um, and one thing I will say, uh, when we, when we started uh working on the health insurance advisory committee. There are a few retirees that we'll give a little shout out. I think it was Heather Rosenfeld and Sue Esslinger, who worked directly with E N V to get. Um, some dental insurance for retirees added their own group. The district didn't actually, it was district employees that retired. But they actually worked with the E N V to get a group plan that was really reasonable for them. So that was really a fantastic uh collaboration.
Yeah, so when they, when they finish their eighteen months on the Cobra plan, they can reach out to E N V.
That's right.
And you want a vision in a.
On a, on a group one.
Um, the vision is basically the same as the dental. It's not offered to our retirees, but again, the Cobra and then the cooperative plan through E N V. Um, basically the same thing. It's uh, we cover an individual plan um. For our employees and if they want a family plan, they pay the difference between an individual and a family plan. Then we have other things like the four oh three B tax shelter annuity that is something that isn't elective for folks to put money away into. Money is flex, so it comes out pre-tax and it goes into the savings account. I get asked a lot, people wanting to put money into their E R S or T R S. The state does not allow people to add money to those retirement systems. So this is a way for folks to save up. We also have a four fifty-seven with land, but the common one is the four oh, four oh three B plan that, and it's um managed through Army. And they are third-party administrative. They make sure everything is done legally. Nobody goes over the maximum amount they can put in on an annual basis. And it's also where we send our um teacher incentives. When teachers retire, they get an incentive and. That is considered a non-elective because it has to go into. Whereas this is a payroll elective for folks. And then we offer the flexible spending accounts for our boys. Again, nothing against, nothing, no liability to the district. Except for an admin, small administrative fee, which is what we do for the um four oh three B plans too. Um, but it's a something that we offer that uh folks can invest in a medical flexible savings account where they can set to pay back out-of-pocket expenses. It is pre-tax. The dependent care is for childcare services, so you can stick money away every pay and then pull from that money as you pay for your childcare. So it is just an extra benefit. We offer, old schools offer it to their, it's not anything special about it, but it is something nice that is offered to the school district, so. And finally, there you go. Feeling right now. I think it's the opposite. I think. No, this is Joe. Um, you know, I I'm happy to answer any questions now. Maybe it's Lee, Sydney and Emmanuel will pitch in. But if there's anything that's like really extensive, I'm always happy to have folks come in my office and I'll sit and review things with Joe.
Oh, you've always been very patient about that.
Coming in all the time. I have employees coming in all the time and I'm always happy to, to meet with them and take as much time as they need. So.
That's terrific.
But if there's anything you want me to answer now, I can do that. If you find yourself going through it and you don't understand something, just reach out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, budget calendar.
Oh, so this is a draft, everyone. Uh, and the reason why the draft, there's one item on there that um I know that our wonderful deputy superintendent Lily Telford is going to be talking about this week. Um, with the uh. With Sean, Dr. Edwards. With Sean, Dr. Everstegadwell and Lex Moira. During the April break, one of our usually very important budget meetings is scheduled to occur. But we typically um I think have started to not have more meetings during breaks. And so that would be the date, April eleventh, where we would actually adopt the budget. Sky was important, so. The budget has to be adopted the following week, right, it has to be adopted by the Friday of the following. So we have a finance and facilities committee meeting scheduled for the eighteenth of April. We could, oh, I think Lily's gonna talk about some options of possibly either um. Not having perhaps a finance facilities and maybe pulling that content into some other meetings and spreading that out. Before um the budget vote and then maybe making a board meeting that night or maybe having finance facility on perhaps a Thursday. And then we could have a board meeting on a Tuesday or maybe sandwiching a meeting in the middle of that, if we really feel that we're ahead of the game with the budget. Going before the April break is really fast, like that feels like we would not have enough. Time in front of the public to really do the work that we do in public, right? Which is really answering all the questions and knowing through. Um the budget itself and the revision of that budget and what it represents in terms of the values for that particular year. And any new innovations that we've come up with and some of the things that we've evaluated to no longer really be serving the way that we thought, right? All of those things, I don't know if we're gonna have time to do that before the eleventh of April and and have a budget to you, so. That's the reason why this is a draft, but it's a really solid draft minus that one row. No, no, and it may not be a thing, it may be a thing, it may not be a thing, we're gonna find out, we're gonna find out. And one thing that I do want to mention at the very bottom of the calendar are all of the, just a smattering of all of the other meetings we're having. Just because it's not actually a row on the budget calendar, doesn't mean that Sydney hasn't already started. Scheduling every budget developer to meet, you know, one-on-one, I'll be at those meetings, Lily, Mary and I will be meeting about staffing. Dan and I will be meeting about facilities and equipment and, you know, all the, all the work for. Support, the e-buses and the proposition development, right, and all of those, so so there are many things not written in here, this is just sort of a guidance tool.
The twenty-first. February, sorry, February twenty-first, this is that, which is right?
Oh, Erin, is there a second thing that we have to do here, Lily? Uh I don't know, do we not, do we not have committees over or?
So it's, I mean, oh, because you think, I'm, well, I'm just, I'm.
No, it's a great, super great question. Sean wanted to start that, um he mentioned it in the New York meeting.
Great, got it, okay.
Um but we, we can shift.
And I think we changed the February date. To the sixteenth, I wanna say.
Okay, okay, oh, okay, so it's to the Thursday then.
So this is a draft, we're gonna work on, I'm not gonna bring it to the board until we know it's pretty close and we may never like, we don't even have to like adopt, I mean, maybe. We would like to adopt it, but I think it can be.
Well, let me.
As long as we know that it's public and out there.
Let me reach out to Sean and Moira, then we can. Chop it up.
My family knows I don't take any vacations during budgets, so I'm gonna be around and I will be here. Anytime you want me, we'll be fully prepared.
What I think should do is. This regard, Chris. All right. Anything else? With people? Since this is me being in the holiday spirit, let's get the heck out of here.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank all of you, appreciate it, great topic.